Lawnmower Company, which would appeal to some. Good evening. Session tonight, and it is regarding the city stormwater policies and procedures. For those of you that were on the council when we were working on, which I guess it's the three of us, when we went through the first process, the first election, one of the things we heard from a lot of the public was, well, you don't have any policies in place. And that was a problem, particularly when we were talking about, well, what if I think your calculation was wrong and that isn't the fee I should pay and that kind of thing. So we know that that was an issue. We also had so many discussions about neighborhoods, and neighborhoods particularly that have detention ponds and whether or not that particular stormwater utility would be helpful. So that's something the Citizens Committee has been really mindful of. And while the Citizen Committee has been meeting, the staff has been working on policies so that they will be ready to go when we actually get ready to do, when we finalize and say, okay, we're ready to go to the voters with this, then we'll already have all our policies ready to go. And when people are asking those questions, then we can tell them. So I appreciate that, and I think we have two policies that we're going to look over today.
Thank you, Mayor. Great overview and introduction. I'll just kick us off here or take it from there, and then Carrie Evenson will dive down into the policy discussion. So appreciate that. Just wanted to, maybe for all of you, and maybe particularly for our newest members, just kind of frame where we've been. It's been almost two years since we had an election. I thought about that today, and I surprised myself. It's been almost exactly two years since the August 26 election. We spent about six months thinking about what just happened to us and tending to our wounds. And then around April last year, the council gave pretty clear direction to staff on what direction to go on the next round of the stormwater funding discussions. There's really three parts to this. Part number one was the formation of a committee, and I frankly think it's been one of the greatest committees I've ever worked with in my career. One of our co-chairs is here, Amanda Naren, and Andy Shear, the other co-chair, and I just cannot say enough for the work that they have done. They've delivered to you a recommendation. Part two was to get out and talk to folks. Open houses, websites, any number of communication tools. To do that, you've helped us, you allowed us to hire Han Public to help us prepare all of that. And we're going to have our fourth open house next Wednesday afternoon, evening.
Three thirty. Three thirty at the Eastside Library.
At the East Branch. So it'd be a great excuse to come and check out the new library if you haven't been there. So that'll be our fourth one, and we're already kind of thinking about a couple more in August to hit some areas that we haven't hit. So this is sort of that third piece of the puzzle. As you said, we heard a lot in that election two years ago that we didn't have policies established. There was some answers we didn't have for folks when they asked us. We sort of knew what we were going to do, but we didn't have it down in writing. We didn't have it adopted or codified. And that's what Carrie and a Citizen Committee or a Staff Committee have been doing for the last several months. And we'd like to roll out a couple of those for you tonight, one particular that's kind of the, one of the most important, we think. And also need some feedback from me about a concept of sort of rolling all this together in one nice, neat stormwater manual, as opposed to having eighteen or twenty or thirty different policies out there floating around. We have lots of policies and practices that we have done for years and years. We are an accredited public works agency, so we have lots and lots of policies for our operations and so on. We have, we have one of the greatest street sweeping manuals in the country, as far as I'm concerned. Not that anyone really cares about that but us. But, so we like to roll all of those together with these. It really is important if you're a street sweeper, let me just tell you that. But anyway, we'd like to put all that into one nice, neat package. So if anyone has a question about stormwater of any kind, operations, policies like this, it's going to be a one nice, neat package. So we'd like your feedback on that.
That will be real helpful also for builders and developers and the people that are out there doing that, so they know.
Absolutely. Anyway, I'm going to hand off to Carrie, and she'll take it from here.
Okay. So when we started looking at policies, right, we wanted to figure out, okay, where exactly did we want to go? And we started with a basic list, coming from what we learned from the last election, but also looking back to the Stormwater Master Plan and some of those key issues that were identified in Section Seven of the Master Plan that the city still needed to discuss and consider and come up with direction and answers to those questions. So the appeals process is part of that, if it's applicable. It depends on how that fee structure is set up, but we do have a draft policy for you to look at today, as well as a potential application form, which can be modified when we have a final rate structure ready to present for ballot language. We also have a credit application process. We'll be using, proposing to be using the same type of process that we already use for other utility fees. The committee proposed a 30% low-income credit, so that will be up to council to decide if that continues. And if so, then we would use the same types of forms that we use for other utilities. They would just be modified to be stormwater specific.
Sir Alex, that is what we do, in that the rate we have for all of our utilities, we give 30% deduction for low-income people, so their rates are lower.
We also looked at potentially stream plan and corridors, water quality protection zones. That was something that was mentioned in the Master Plan as somewhere that the city needed to go, and we have already, as a city, done that through our Code of Ordinances. We've got the water quality protection zone requirements in Chapter 19, so that's an area where we've already considered and answered those questions. Structural and nonstructural controls, that's a policy that's out there that we're still working on. Those would be those measures that the city would take to address stormwater pollution. So how do we reduce the amount of nitrogen, phosphorus, total suspended solids being discharged to Lake Thunderbird? Those are parts of those structural, nonstructural controls, but it's also, can be expanded citywide to meet our stormwater permit requirements through the state. With that, our MS4 program, Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Program. We are required to have an educational program, which is a nonstructural control, to reduce the amount of pollution that's being discharged in our stormwater to our surface waters. So that's something that we are working on. We have some work that we're already doing, but it hasn't been put into a regular policy. Dam safety, we've discussed as a, with the council previously, will be something that we'll also be incorporating maintenance into. Another thing was acquisition of easements and right-of-way for maintenance purposes. This is important, and this is a policy that we'll be working on. And then enhanced maintenance of crease and detention ponds. And we're addressing that aspect through the Neighborhood Assistance Program, and you have a draft of that policy as well as the application form in your packet. So with this, like Sean talked about, what we're proposing is one, one source for all of these policies and procedures. I'm calling it a Stormwater Division Policy Manual. It really helps me to become organized and helps the division to become organized because it will set out all of those policies that, one, have already been developed, those that are in process, and keep that as a one-stop shop for those types of stormwater maintenance policies, stormwater quality, floodplain management, the utility policies like Neighborhood Assistance and Appeals, easements and right-of-way, as well as emergency preparedness and response, related directly to spill response. How does stormwater react to that when we're notified of spills? How does, how do we work with the fire department and their hazmat units on that? So this would be the place to go for those types of information.
Carrie, have we had, can you give an example of when we've had a spill that was...
So common things that we will respond to as far as the Stormwater Division, someone will, something will fall off a truck, like a paint can, or we had one instance where a lawn company lost a dye pack and it turned the street green. So we respond, if it's something that we can respond to with the spill kits that we have in our vehicles, then we respond to that and clean that up. If it's a larger spill, then we'll call a spill response company in to clean that up so that that material doesn't make its way into our storm sewer system.
So it's done immediately wherever the spill happens, so you're not worried about getting into the stormwater system?
Right.
Where then I don't know what you would do.
They're all fairly unique, Mayor. I've been, we've had in Norman, a couple, three years ago, a major truck sprung a hydraulic leak, and there was hydraulic fluid in large quantities up and down a street. The stormwater system was nearby, so we got the call, immediately went out and tried to suspend the hydraulic fluids from entering the stormwater system. There was a major fuel leak on a semi truck on Flood Street a few years ago, so we dispatched at seven o'clock at night to deal with the fuel. So these things just happen, and they're all kind of unique. I'm going to say two to five a year is probably about average.
Councilmember Wilson.
Do we get money from the companies, like the trucking company, and that's where we get damages for that?
We do. Major cleanups like the hydraulic spill, we, they don't know what to do, frankly. That's part of the problem. It's going to take them a day or so. We can't wait a day or so. So we put them on notice, bring in contractors, preposition contractors, put them to work, and send the bill to the company who caused the leak. And usually don't have too much trouble getting them to be reimbursed.
Councilmember Holman.
How, how is your office notified about a spill that happens at seven o'clock at night? Is it the police department, or what is...
Yes, usually. That's, that's exactly right, Councilmember. It's usually, just like so many things that we encounter out there, the police department is typically the first agency that hears about it. There's a call that comes in, they're dispatched to what someone reports is an emergency or a problem. They ascertain what's going on, and they call the department or the division that can help them. Public Works is, we tend to be one of those that gets the call a lot.
And they're training in that environment and stuff?
Yes. That's a policy. We have a policy for that. So the PD, the folks are trained on the policy, as Carrie's folks are trained on the policy. So, you know, when it happens, that's too late to train people. You have to be trained ahead of time. It's like snow and ice control. So that's like an example of these policies, that her folks are trained to know, okay, I need to leave my family, the guy that's on call that night, I'm going to go get the truck, and we're going to take care of this. It's just automatic now. Yeah.
Councilmember Clark.
Didn't we recently have a gas spill at the 711 at 24th Millimeter?
Seems like we did. I remember something about that, yeah. So it would have been a similar situation.
Okay. Again, I believe the PD again.
Uh huh. And again, sometimes it's not a large quantity, and other times it can be pretty significant. And, yeah, but the point which you made is right, Mayor. The key is keep that material from entering the stormwater system. That's our first order of business. Safety, of course, is, is primary too as well, but for our work, it's to try to keep that stuff out of the system.
Okay. So we do have existing policies, especially on the maintenance and operations side, really created because of the public works accreditation process that we went through with the American Public Works Association. They're currently under review and revision as we're working on our reaccreditation and updating to reflect the changes that have occurred recently with the formation of the Stormwater Division, so making sure that those policies are all up to date. And those will be incorporated into the Stormwater Policy Manual. So one of those is like Sean alluded to, is the, or talked about, is the Street Sweeping Manual. We'll have, we'll have information and procedures on infrastructure inspection and maintenance, as well as on the quality side, things like the earth change permit issuance policy, right? Just to have that document in place. So as we have changes in our program, a document is there for the next person in line to learn exactly how we do what we're doing on a daily basis. Okay? So the proposed new draft policies that you have, the first one is the Neighborhood Assistance Program. Both the policy and the application are currently in draft form. The Stormwater Citizen Committee recommended that an annual program budget of 1.25 million be set aside for the Neighborhood Assistance Program, of course, subject to council approval. And the way the program is being envisioned currently is that it would be a 50-50 cost-share program. The reason for this is that we have that precedent out there already on other similar projects, such as the Summit Lake Dam, the floom repair that occurred in Cambridge, Cambridge Editions. Those were a cost share. And so that's where we're at right now with Neighborhood Assistance. The appeals process, again, both the policy and the application are in draft form, and basically that would allow customers to appeal their residential or their nonresidential classification, to make sure they're appropriately put into either the residential category or the nonresidential category.
Councilmember Clark has a question.
I have a question about the 50-50 cost-share program and kind of an appeals for that, because I know, I'm guessing we all have neighborhoods that might be older, that may not have HOAs, so they don't get regularly monthly dues, and the residents themselves, these are older houses in the 50s, 60s, so it could be a lower socioeconomic group. What if they just don't have it, and they're having a serious stormwater problem? How do we set the scale of when 50-50, when, okay, we'll just take care of it, and how do we make sure that's not abused? I mean, that's...
And that's a great question.
And that's, that's the kind of feedback that we need is to, and some of this might just play itself out once we get this going, but that's exactly the feedback we need is, are there going to be exceptions? Might bring your attention, again, in your packet, you have the policy. It's, we're happy to drill down as deep as you'd like, but again, this was, this would be the policy as proposed. Usually, I think it's a four-page, yeah, four-page document here in your packet. Yes, that one.
Councilmember Wilson has a question as well.
Kind of a related. So I do have a lot of those small HOAs that have a lot of inferior infrastructure, that the HOAs are long gone, people don't even know they're in HOAs. And for me, a lot of the problems are the roads, but probably actually culvert drains because when a rain event happens, it takes the road out, which actually probably does cause those problems in some capacity because all that silting goes into our, you know, areas. So I do support, I like this part of every, of what we're talking about, but I don't see maybe how the roads themselves could be addressed. I don't know if that's a question or a statement. Is that something that would be considered in this? If somebody said, my road washed out because we had one, like a 2014 or 15, whenever we had that big event?
That's a great question. That's the kind of thing we need to sort of define. We, we don't want this to become a road program, I guess, and that's, that line between...
Well, and then kind of subcategory D of this question is, do we have a road category? I mean, do we have in a different place a road cost-share? I know we have a bring it up to speed and we'll take it over kind of program, but is there a way for citizens to get some matching funds through the city currently for roads?
I think you're talking mostly about private roads.
Private roads, absolutely.
Am I right? Yes, and that, that really is a problem. It's more of a problem than Ward Five, certainly than other places. And no, the only program that I am aware of that we have now for private roads is for them to bring it up to a current stand, the city's current standard, like all other public roads. They can do that using a special assessment finance district, which is a great tool. And then once that is brought up to the city's street standards, then the city would inherit that and maintain it in perpetuity. But the key there, and the challenge we always have there, is that many of those neighborhoods, they, they were allowed to develop with a very substandard road and a pretty cheap road, frankly.
Yeah, so really bad.
And to get into this equity question, how is it fair for the other neighborhoods to pay for the full cost?
Right, absolutely.
You know, so that's a great question. It's one we have to work out. If we can find it to be a stormwater-related issue, I think we can find a way to work it into this program, but I think there's a fine line between stormwater and road maintenance, and that's, again, something that we'll have to kind of stumble through.
Okay. Councilmember Hitman.
This is, I really appreciate this. I think it's something Sean, you and I talked about a year, two years ago or something, about having this book and everything. So I think this is good, good work, and I really appreciate it, and I, you know, think the direction you guys are going is right on. On the application, I'm just a little concerned, thinking that, you know, the, for the average person, it seems a little like it might be challenging. What I mean by that is, if I understand this correctly, like for the application process, on page one, necessary documents to be submitted, I actually have, have to have a participation agreement between the city and the applicant already done, and majority of the neighbors already signed off on it to then even submit the application for the project. I guess because what I was envisioning was, you know, I could say, hey, there's this problem in my neighborhood, and I could submit it to you guys. You guys would, could then investigate it and say, and then rank them, and then, you know, I'm envisioning it almost like, like for schools. You apply, and then you, then certain kids get enrolled, depending upon, you know, the capacity of the school, let's say. And as opposed to having all of your paperwork done when you apply and you enroll, you don't necessarily turn in your shot records and all your other stuff until you actually enroll. And I'm thinking about like a charter school, maybe example, where, you know, you, there's a process where you apply, and then you get admitted, then you enroll, or a private school. That's kind of what I was envisioning, because the average person isn't going to be able to get these things. It may, will be difficult to get these things done, and you guys could be spending tons and tons of time negotiating agreements on projects you never, you know, that are ranked way down the list, and that could be frustrating, I would think, for you guys, the staff, and then for these owners. What I would envision is more of a very simple, you know, apply, here's kind of our project. You guys rank them and say, okay, you get 30 applications, you're only going to build a fund, you think, about 10. You focus on the top 10, and if you get agreements done, you get things worked out, majority of the owners, you know, then you, you know, you get the package finalized on them, and you go forward. It may be that as you start vetting through those top 10, three or four of them don't pan out, then you go down to numbers 11, you know, kind of like the waitlist.
Sounds like the sidewalk program.
Yeah. I think you're right on. A point well taken, and I think we, and that's something we can work on and simplify. But I do think we envision ourselves literally sitting down with each of these applicants and doing exactly what you said, is helping them fill out the application, get the...
And that's kind of what, that's the feedback I was trying to give you, is I'm trying to make it a little bit easier on you guys, because there's no reason to negotiate an agreement for every single person. If you get 50 applications, if you're only going to be able to do 10. So let's get in the, sort of the general applications. You guys kind of do a general priority. Tell them, you know, hey, we've done an initial prioritization of the 50 applications we received. You know, you're in the X tier, and therefore we will be contacting you to continue the process and to further negotiate and discuss it, et cetera. Then notify the other ones that you're currently on the waiting list. We will be back in touch with you, depending upon if you make it into the priority range for this current year. Otherwise, we can hold your application to next year or something.
Appreciate that.
Because I think that makes life easier for you guys, too, and easier for our residents to make these application submissions.
Totally agree. And if I may, just kind of focus in on that second paragraph on the app, on the program document, project prioritization. What we kind of envision, we may be wrong, we kind of envision what's going to happen is we're going to self-generate a lot of projects because folks don't know what to ask for, they don't know what to do. So a really big part of our stormwater program and our funding proposals and the additional resources to apply to our stormwater program is to have a better inventory and assessment of our system. You know, we have about 300 detention basins in Norman, most of them privately owned, and we have no idea what condition they're in, because we don't have a right to enter that space, it's privately owned. Those folks are doing the best they can, but they really don't know what to look for. So one of the big proposals in our stormwater program is to do a, an elaborate inventory of all 300 detention basins and create for them, here are the things that you need to be doing. Your dam's in trouble. Your outlet pipe is falling apart. Your flume is cracked. I mean, and then by doing that, we're going to create our own set of projects, if you will, for these folks that says, listen, we've got a program for you, a 50-50 program to help you pay for that, and here are the priorities that we think you ought to consider. You ought to fix that dam. You know, get the dam fixed first, that sort of thing, because that's what we think is going to happen. People just aren't going to know, fight what to do with their systems like they do today.
Councilmember Wilson.
Speaking of dams, as we do this assessment or inventory of dams, farm pond-type dam situations, I know I have one resident in my ward that has a dam, a pond dam, that was just like a farm pond, and there's been development basically downhill from them, and that's created a situation where their dam is now a high-hazard dam or increased the hazard in some capacity. So I think that one thing I was wondering, I'd asked a while back, if we had a way when we were doing developments downstream of looking at the dams upstream and what effects those are going to have, if there was any kind of impact fees that were collected at that time.
I think the answer is yes, although it hasn't always been that way. The best example I can give you was the recent Destin Landing project, which was in partially or largely in Ward Five, and there was a upstream dam that was very, owner's detention basin and dam that was owned, and we required the developer actually do an assessment of that condition and to determine if that was going to be a, to create a higher hazard condition. The answer was no, it was not, which again, largely based upon how much development and how much impact that would have downstream. But yes, I think that is a...
Is that a policy that's written somewhere?
It's really embedded in our stormwater regulations, and that's how we acted on it for this case.
And then post-game, now that we have like this other pond that's probably grandfathered in, you know, before, if there were a situation, even though they're not an HOA, it's a private pond, they would be probably in this assistance program if they started having problems. Like, I understand that the high hazard doesn't mean they're having problems, it just means that there's a potential, if there were problems, for it to be a higher hazard.
Another great question, and this is where it gets a little gray, where if this was a private rural property, are you going to treat them the same as you're going to treat developed subdivisions?
And I would argue, and they're, and, you know, just on their behalf, that they didn't really create the situation. They had a farm pond, and then development happened downstream that we, as a city, approved.
True. The other thing I think we can offer is the regulation of dams in Oklahoma are done by the State of Oklahoma. They have a dam program and staff that assists people statewide, so we could be the liaison to the state.
So there's a statewide assistance.
The city really doesn't regulate dams.
That's good to know.
Most cities do not.
I did not know that.
But the state does, and we are...
Well, I'm glad we took up this damn topic.
There is a state dam engineer, by the way.
And I mean, that whole conversation concerns me a lot. I understand what the problem is, but I have a farm pond with a dam, and there must be thousands of them, and mine has a leak in it, and it's never occurred to me that the city would have any responsibility, even though Highland Hills was built across the street, and it did make a difference. All it did was help dry my pond up a little bit more because they rerouted their water to their own pond. But, so, I mean, that could be just a huge issue out there. There's got to be thousands of them out there.
Well, and on this one specifically, it's, it's, the pond was there, and now the houses are built kind of up next to it. It's not that the water's going into the pond, it's that the people are now downstream, so when that pond fails, if it were to fail, then you have a problem. So then they've been...
Lakes issue.
Right. So, and then that was something we didn't assess before, which was when we have a development happening downstream, you know, an impact, but it sounds like we're doing it now.
Right.
I don't think it's a big, I don't think there's any other really big ones now that we're doing it. It's that one that I know about.
I understand.
It's just there's so many old farm ponds out there, so many houses have their own pond. There's, there's five ponds on that half section.
Sure, absolutely. I think it's always that question of the public interest. What is the public interest in this issue? Should the city be involved in that or not? And I think you're going to have those cases where...
I got a dam, maybe. I don't. Council, did, did you have your hand up to...
Go ahead.
Okay. Councilmember Castleberry.
Cambridge, I remember, that was like a $25,000 deal.
Think it was, yeah.
But Summit Lake's not 50-50, is it?
No. Not, well, it's still developing, but it looks like Summit Lake's will pay the majority of the cost of that, of the capital cost, and the city will take ownership of the dam in perpetuity. There is some proposed cost sharing of some engineering costs, but not 50-50. No.
Something I'm a little concerned about, if, if, I've had a neighbor, what do we decide? Are we going to assess homeowner associations for their, are they going to have a fee also?
As far as the funding proposal?
Yeah.
No.
Are you talking about, I'm sorry.
No.
He looked at me, so...
But they're...
Yeah, are you talking about common areas, like clubhouses and such?
Yes.
I mean, I think the discussion right now is that they have not been figured out. So common areas, you know, it's not an impervious circumstance, but if you have a pool house or clubhouse or whatever, they would not be charged.
Because that was one of the major concerns.
Because that was one of the major concerns on the first one was, I, I live in Cambridge. So I pay my annual dues, which are to maintain this stormwater structure, basically in the mow and stuff like this. And then the homeowner association has, they pay some dues, but yet. If we have something that comes in there, I paid dues for there and yet now I'm going to pay a stormwater fee, so I'm, I'm paying twice.
Understand.
And so that's why I pushed that, you know, I, I don't think, it shouldn't matter whether you live in a homeowner's association or not.
Well, this, this particular utility is based on each individual house. It's not. It's not.
But no, the common areas would be exempt.
So you would pay just like everyone else.
And the neighborhood type of area, stuff like that, so.
Right. I'll only say, and you know this, kind of right, with the HOAs that we deal with, um, have about enough to do the mowing and, and take care of flowers. They never have enough to really maintain the stormwater system, which is why we get the calls. That's really what this program, I think, is intended to do, is to help not only do a better job of maintenance that they're not doing today, most of them. But to have a funding source to actually go out and get it done.
Well, I, I think we, we're going to have to create some guidelines here. I mean, if it's fifty fifty, it's fifty fifty. Is it seventy-five, seventy, whatever that, I think we can't just say, yeah, Cambridge, you're only twenty-five thousand dollars, so we'll split that with you. Hey, Summit Lakes, you're a million dollars, so we're not going fifty fifty with you, you know, so I, we've got to, and I don't know what the answer is.
Exactly right.
We're going to be kind of consistent here because a, a lot of the older neighborhoods, you know, while their, their problems are created from new development. But it's also because they didn't maintain their structure and where a newer addition, if I'm looking at, uh, Carrington. You know, theoretically Carrington shouldn't pay a dime for stormwater. They, they've, it's a newer addition, they've got their own stormwater management.
Right.
But you're part of the whole system, so I think we've got to figure out a little bit of how to not penalize the newer neighborhoods who have done all, comply with all standards, it does additional cost. But yet we want to make sure we still have that, so I want to make sure if we're going to call it a fifty fifty cost sharing, it needs to be fifty fifty. We're just going to call it a cost sharing.
Right.
You know, to figure out what, what we can do.
That's a great, great point.
And that's the most problems, but not necessarily.
Again, if council were inclined to do some other, I mean, get fifty fifty was sort of a.
That's just, I know, starting point, but yeah.
But the other thing I mentioned too is we imagine too, with each of these, let's, let's say there are ten projects a year, uh, for the sake of discussion. Um, you will have entered into an agreement with each of those ten neighborhoods or HOAs, whatever they are. And council will have very clear, um, language in each agreement as to what we're doing, what the actual dollars are. For instance, um, in-kind contribution might be something that a neighborhood would do. They might say, listen, we want to donate all these easements and, and we want to donate a tractor or whatever. I don't know what, what they might donate, but, uh, and that might be something the council would entertain as an in-kind contribution to their fifty percent share. So there might be different combinations of things that these folks come to you with and the council would have to approve each agreement.
Well, and I'd also like to see maybe like a cap or something. When does it become part of this neighborhood assistance program and when does it become part of the quote bond issue? The rolling bond issues, hopefully we have, you know, when does, is it at a million dollars, you're not eligible for neighborhood assistance? You're going to be part of the bond package or if it's five hundred thousand dollars, you, I don't know what that.
That's a good, that's a good.
Kind of looking at that list of our stormwater projects or.
Right.
And figure out kind of where I, a workable line is that, you know, you're not going to wait five years for next bond issue to get this stuff fixed. But yet by same token, you're not going to drain, you're not going to be the only project we do that year.
It's a great point. We'll get to work. That's a great point because there's got to be a limit to every program.
The most workable level and it's a.
We have cost share program up too.
Yeah, if we could kind of look at that.
And we envision, and I think in our minds, we envision a smaller number certainly, but we'll, we'll do some work on that, right back to. But anyway, this does kind of lay out, um, the, our first attempt at this. And, and again, the, the key is that the funding be allocated and or approved in some level. The one point two five million came from the committee's recommendation. And, um, and then again, just being able to manage the process each year.
Okay, councilmember Clark and then councilmember Castleberry.
Just because I'm guessing I'll get asked about it, how did we come up with the one point two five million?
That was based on recommendations from the committee. They wanted a large enough number that we could do several projects per year.
I mean, I'll be honest, from what I remember, a lot of us wanted more, but we were worried about keep, you know, I mean, we, we, a lot of us really wanted to take over all that infrastructure. Because it's really hard for private infrastructure to be maintained. But, but we couldn't do that and keep it under ten million dollar utility. We just couldn't do it. I mean, it was more like eleven, eleven and a half. So it was important to, to most of us, if not all of us, that we have some line item in there for private. And this was the light bulb moment for me, privately owned stormwater infrastructure. Doesn't have to be in an HOA, but as long as it's privately owned. And to keep fees low enough, what we felt like was a reasonable sum, that was kind of how we arrived at that number. And meeting all of our other needs in the, in the, in the utility program, because we had a lot of other needs. So we would love to see that grow in the years to come. And, and, and maybe we can eventually move in the direction where we are maintaining most of that. We, like Sean said, we don't know the condition of these and a couple of years we will. So we will know more of the needs of this privately owned infrastructure once it's inventoried. Um, but this was just, we felt important to have it in the beginning. Um, I will also say at a lot of the open houses, when this comes up for discussion, people are pleasantly and happy about it. They, they like it, especially when we were on the east side at Washington Elementary. We've had a really good mix of people from all wards at all of our open houses, but, um, people really liked that. In fact, after the first one, we were asked to add a poster about the neighborhood assistance program, which we did. Um, because then people feel like there's something that, there may be something to help us. Or if we need help, there may be something there in the future. It's been received very well, even when we've said, we're working on the policy. We don't know what it looks like yet, but they're, they're intrigued.
Well, and I, I like that it's, it's a very good reason to, for that number, it's enough to get started. And still keeps us at a reasonable utility fee. And I, I think that our utilities department has been such good stewards of our utility money. That if we do these first initial projects responsibly, when if, if and when we go back and ask for an increase of the utility, we could point to successful programs.
Yeah, that's good, Will.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Councilmember Castleberry.
I will go on record that I don't think there should be cost sharing at all. I think the city should take care of all of it. If we're going to have, I mean, I think the city should maintain the stormwater infrastructure of the system, just like we maintain the road system. You know, but I know it's expensive, but I think if.
I think it's.
It's all connected. You got one bad spot right here, that messes everything else up here. So if we're going to be responsible for it, you know, because we picked this project over here, this could be where the pipe, it doesn't flow right, it causes problems here. So I'd like to see us be in charge of the entire thing if, if we get that. I guess, and then my second comment would be, my question is this one point two five, is this a, an annual deal? Or would this be a kind of a, we're going to put one point two five million into a fund? And hopefully it carries over each year?
It's built in, that's the way it's built in, that's the way it's recommended to you right now. It is a one point two five million per year.
Well, we're not one point two five every year, but I would also like to have a fund there.
Absolutely.
You know, and so that, because that's, that's coming out of the, uh, the fee itself.
Exactly.
And so, because you're going to have those years where we have three million dollar problem here. Well, we only have a million dollars a year, we can't fix it, but hey, we only had half a million this year. You know, we may actually be able to, to build up some, some, some funds in there for some major projects and it'll come down a little bit. I mean, I don't want it to get up to, you know, twenty million dollars, you know, but I think that'll, you kind of sell, take care of itself. As that fund builds up, we'll, we'll have plenty of projects to do, but I would like to see it kind of carry you over a little bit.
Absolutely. That's the way we envision.
If we can do that.
At your previous point, I think some of the discussion I've heard is sort of that skin in the game issue. That neighborhood that has done a terrible job of maintaining their stuff, they're going to get a hundred percent as well as the neighborhood that's done a great job of maintaining their stuff. Is that, is that fair? Is it reasonable?
Well, they're all going to skin the game, should be painted to it.
Right. So anyway, that's the discussion.
But that's comes to their ability to it. They don't have the ability to do it. Well, they got, they can have the skin to get it, you want to. If they don't have the backhoe, they don't have the engineering ability. If, if they do it themselves, they'll mess it up and mess, which messes up the entire infrastructure.
Yeah.
You know, we don't let individual HOAs fix their roads.
Right. Exactly. So I understand. Yeah, I just, that was the discussion.
And, and I agree that that would, in the perfect world, that would be what we would want to do. I, I do know that all of us, and you were at all the meetings, um, that listened to the committee discussion. I mean, they would have loved to have the seven million dollars a year. We would love to have this three million dollar a year program. But I, I think what we all have to keep in our mind is we're trying to get something started. And I really appreciate the one point two five million because it gets us started. We have the idea, we are going to appropriate money for this every year. But we just, there was just so much to spend money on. And we know what happens if we try to go out and try to start this out with too, too big a you. The, the utility rate has got to be very, very reasonable or the public is just.
Right, me first.
They, they won't want to pass it. So we have to be careful and we have to do a good, good, good job of telling them what that money's going for. Councilmember Clark.
I think I would agree that, you know, it is an issue that if it messes up here, it floods other neighbors. And I, and I've had neighborhoods with that issue, obviously several in Ward six. But I feel like that's a slippery slope, like it's a sidewalk program. You know, I have residents who are often shocked when they email me and want their sidewalk fixed. And then they realize, well, it's a cost share program because it's your sidewalk now. And then with our ADA stuff moving forward, I think we just need to be careful. Uh, but I, I agree with it's a, it's a unique kind of problem, but I, I would caution. I guess I'll go on record as saying I, I support the fifty fifty because of the slippery slope possibility with other methods of improvement that we have on the books right now in the city.
Get us started. We need to get it started. All right, councilmember Castleberry.
Okay, my, my. Final comment on the, on the stormwater here, wherever getting there is. I, I think the citizens will.
Pay a higher fee.
If we give them value. And I don't, I think we need to go with a seven million dollar stormwater utility with no subsidy from the general fund. We're going to do it. Let's do it right. Let's do it right for the first, first time. We, we, if we have these policies and procedures in place, I think we're, we're addressing a lot of the problems that people were unwilling to pay for last time. I think this, the, the stormwater committee has addressed those. We've got away from the impervious surface. I, I think a lot of the, the main issues, this is a gravel road, not a gravel road, appeals process. I, those type of initial things that were, that people, I'm not willing to pay for this, I don't really know what I'm getting. Since we've addressed those and make sure we have those addressed, I, I think people will pay for it. We've demonstrated the issue. I mean, these means we go to, nobody is saying, no, we don't have a problem and I don't want to pay for it. You know, I think most of us have been really receptive once we've shown them what the problem is.
Most people have said they, they agree that there's a problem. Everyone that has been to the open houses, even when they came in and they were not in a good mood. They went out, they really, I mean, you could tell they were ready to fight about it. But they went out saying, I learned a lot and thank you very much. And that didn't mean they were ready to go vote, but it did mean that they appreciated the information. And they, and many of them said, I, I, okay, I understand this now. I do see.
And I think the last issue we have to address is the equity, as long as the equability issue. I think if people are happy or comfortable with fair equity type stuff like this, the fee is not that big a deal. Because all these things we've kind of looked at for sixty to seventy percent of people in Norman, residents, stuff like this, we're talking about ten bucks or less a month. You know, what they don't want is I pay nine dollars a month and Walmart pays twenty bucks a month. You know, I think as long as we've got that equity, they got more, they're a bigger deal. Like if we, and I think we've done a really good job of addressing that, but I think that's going to be, people will pay more if they feel it's fair. As it can be, you know, equi, nobody, everybody's got a different sense of fairness. There's no question about that.
Big topic at every meeting of open house meetings.
Councilmember Holman.
I mean, I have some apprehension based on our experience last time, but, I mean, I agree completely about the desire to have a fully funded or as close as we can get. My concern about, I mean, I understand we need to get something passed. My concern about just trying to get the minimum is that the utility would never catch up. But specifically because we have to vote on it, it would be, you know, every five years or more probably. And that utility, the cost would continue to grow every year. And that utility rate would never be able to catch up with the cost if we start off too low. And that was one of the things I heard about Oklahoma City is they have a stormwater utility, but they underfunded vastly.
Was, what was it, a flat five dollars a month?
It was real simple and easy, but it's.
It's, it's real simple, but it's water meters.
Basically underfunded, so that's.
I'll tell you, we have stormwater utility, but we don't have a big enough one.
Because a lot of these issues are just, you know, there's going to be other issues we don't, in the future that we don't even know about right now. New neighborhoods now are going to get old at some point. You know, some of the neighborhoods that are older and have problems now, well, when they were built, they were following all the regulations and guidelines that existed at that time, or at least to a certain extent. And, um, so, you know, I just, this is a cost that we're always going to have as long as this city exists in time. So, um, I, politically, if it's possible to get a seven million dollar utility, I don't know, but I agree fully that we need to try to get there.
Hey, I, I would like to, if Amanda doesn't mind, that, that kind of good, better, best thing that you all looked at in terms of funding to, to understand. Here's what the, because the committee also would have loved to have gone to the top. But they, it might help to kind of understand what kind of things that they identified and how they decided about the amounts of money they thought.
So we asked very early on, when we were doing our education, we asked the stormwater, um, department for what's better than, what's good, what's okay, better than what we have now. What's better and what's best? And that ranged from five million dollars, I think, if I remember correctly, to seven point four, which was the ideal better. To best was eleven plus million. And the committee felt very strongly that there is no way that the community would support an eleven plus million dollar utility out the, out of the gate. That was including managed, you know, managing all the HOA and private infrastructure. That was like the gold standard program. So, but we also felt like five million wasn't enough. So we settled in the seven point four, which is ideal for now, right? It helps us to continue, to continue to meet our mandates. Um, and, and as those mandates grow in the future, because we know they will. Um, and it also lets us ca- catch up on maintenance we haven't been doing or been able to do and to add the staff to be able to do that. Um, as well as we felt very strongly about the, the bond program because we didn't want to pay to maintain something with the utility that's broken. So let's start fixing these big infrastructure problems because we got a lot of them, about a hundred and twenty million dollars worth. And, and let's let these things go hand in hand. So that's, we didn't think we could pass a hundred and twenty million dollar bond either. So we, we took, took half of that, which is thirty-three projects, three in each ward as it sits now. So we felt like it was, you know, it was a good compromise. Um, as far as the seven million fully funded program, everybody really worried last time, there was a lot of argument that the three point one, it was going to be a double tax. I'm already paying three point one on the general fund of stormwater, but you're going to take that away from stormwater. So what are you going to do with that money? We all know we have a lot of good things that we can do with that money very easily, but the citizens didn't trust that. And, and, and the city didn't do a very good job explaining last time exactly what we would do with that money. So the committee was adamant, I mean, really strongly felt, the entire committee, that, that three point one still continued to come out of the general fund at least initially. Also lets us keep fees as low as possible. So what I also want to talk about, because you made a couple of good points, is very quickly, I don't want to sidetrack your meeting because this is about policies. But just to give you an update on our kind of envisioned timeline, nothing official. Um, we, we have possibly at least three more open houses within that through August. We may add another one or two in September based on, on feedback, if we get requests to have them in other locations. Um, I'm kind of thinking in my mind, and this wasn't a committee discussion, we haven't officially met since February. But if we feel like we have enough information, we've had tons of comments cards filled out, we have the microsite that people are submitting comments. We have a million different ways we're getting input. We will evaluate that input. We've also had focus groups. We will get that, that was put on by Han Public, as well as the entire survey that, if you remember, was done initially. We'll put an entire report together for council and come back to you mid to late September, early October, unless you all dictate a different timeline. I mean, this is just, like I said, this is my mind, my process thinking. And see where you want us to go from there. You might say, we want you to go back as a committee and address these things, equity, we want you to, whatever. And we can meet as a committee and do it, or you might say. Or you might say, well, you know what, thank you, we're gonna take it from here and we're gonna address these things as a council. That's your decision. That's kind of what we envision happening next. But we want, we, we hope you'll be patient with us enough to do enough of the public engagement that we feel like we're really getting a good sample from across the whole city. We've had a lot of great turnout.
I appreciate all of your work. I want to start with that. I mean, I feel like we all work a ton and she's doing so much and has for so long and bless you.
Thank you.
I, you are, you and Andy, all, everyone on the committee is just, you guys, we should take him out for ice cream or something. But once we get it all compiled, my guess, my question is for us, if we, we like what we got and we're ready to roll, when do we have to have it decided if we're gonna go for November? I mean, is it, is October too late?
I don't, I don't think we have time.
First reading would have to be July 24th to have it, to have a November.
I, I think if anything we've learned, we've got to take our time on this and I think we are doing that and I am so grateful for that. And I love that we're already evolving and we're taking in the feedback. So obviously November's out, so would this be a February election with council elections?
I think, I think February would be the soonest that we, we could do it.
Okay.
That'd be a citywide.
And it's a mayoral election, so it's already citywide, so.
That'd be our first, first possible.
I do want to make the point that we have a lot of deliverables yet to come from HON. We have an entire communication plan that they're going to give us once you all finalize things. We've worked with them a lot in the beginning, kind of not, not needing their services right now because this is our part. But then once you all finalize something, they will put together a communication plan to have more public meetings, to do a lot more communicating with, this is now the plan. We've taken your feedback, this is now the plan. So there's a whole nother step once you finalize things. And that can go on for as long as, as long as we, you all choose to, to go on. So there's more to come from HON public for sure.
So I know we're having open houses right now and it's been great being all over the community. Are we having ward meetings as well like we did last time or is that not decided yet?
We haven't discussed it.
It's up to you.
Once we.
My wording, well, once we have a plan to be voted on.
Smart.
Yeah, one other quick thing, I've been asked by a lot of councilmembers, texted on the day, uh, do you want us to come to these open houses? Yes, we want you to come to, and, and it's, it's, we've posted it, so if we have a quorum of council, it's not a problem. We want you all to come to as many as possible, to hear as many different people from around the city, what their issues are. You guys represent a ward and you hear a lot about what your ward needs are. But, and same with your constituents, they hear a lot what goes on in their area of town. But we, the reason we wanted to start with community wide open houses is so everybody would hear from different parts of the community, and man, I feel sorry for that guy down in Ward 4. I didn't know they had those problems. Or I totally understand Ward's 5's, 5's issues, the people that live rurally. And we want you all to hear that too. You have no assignment when you come to the open houses. A lot of you have come and seen that, we just want you to listen. And the discussion stage that we have about an hour into it or 30 minutes into it is the best part because that's when really everybody's having a very fruitful, productive discussion as a group, not an individual, you know, visiting each station.
And the food has been good.
And the food is really good. The food is fabulous. So we, we want you to come to as many as possible that you're able to come to. We try to have them different times of days and different locations. But don't feel like, oh, I already went to one, I know what they're gonna say. Because we have had a different message at every one. The, the issue over here was different than the issue over here, than the issue was in central Norman.
Street sweepers, we've got to put signs on them so people know that they're actually setting.
The concerns and the comments are very different at every single one. Yet we have people from all over the city come to every single one. We had a lot of Ward 4 people come over to the west side of town. So anyway, I just wanted to make that clear. You are invited and encouraged to come as often as you can, because it's good for you to hear it too. But you will get a big, a report where we get.
And Amanda's been at every one of them.
If I may add one more point, and Amanda did a wonderful job there, but the other decision for council, we've talked a lot about, is when you get to that final, whatever that final stage is before you pull the trigger on a ballot for an election, do you want to do a scientific survey citywide to know that we have yes votes for whatever package it is that's going out? That's a really important decision and we've talked about that might be the thing to do instead of just guessing based upon what we've heard.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Well, we got a lot of extra information too. Thank you, Amanda. Okay, final questions about. Oh, okay, we still have some questions on the second. Are we ready for next?
I have one more question and I don't know where it's gonna fit, so I'll just go in. And I don't know where it came from, but someone had mentioned to me that, uh, street sweepers is like confusing to people because it doesn't seem like that big of a deal. Is there a way where we can reframe it and call it something else where people? But you know what I mean, like.
I think we should call them street vacuums.
But I mean, because they are so important, but I think people are quick to dismiss street sweepers.
No, we're hearing, we actually heard, had a pretty good discussion with them. We need to, we need to reframe that. You're exactly right.
Something like the cool, like the vector control officer. Just mosquito guy, but his technical title makes him sound really cool.
You're right. I can get down on that. Okay, put on your thinking caps everyone, something comparable to vector control officer.
Just so you know, we've outlawed the word street sweeper and impervious surface in Ward 5.
Street cleaning up.
If anybody goes onto the Ward 5 page and says it, I'm putting dog, I'm doing some bad.
And I, I did, I was out at Little X, at their little reading program celebration thing on Tuesday, I guess. And that was one of the questions I got, the, a lady that lives way out there said, you know, just, I don't want to have to be paying for street sweepers because they only help the people in the middle of Norman. That's the first thing she said to me.
What happened? You were sending us maps of where you were sweeping.
We're doing that monthly, we'll keep, keep doing it for you. We'd mention one interesting.
There you go.
Interesting sidebar, I don't know if you followed it, but the City of Moore had a multi-phase bond proposal recently. And they decided, we think it's because of their stormwater program, to put street sweepers as a separate proposition. It went down.
Because it's not sexy.
Whatever it is, that's right.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it is.
People don't understand what they do.
Right, that's true. But I think it's the same problem we're having, people didn't vote for it because they didn't understand why would I pay for something like that.
Right, that, that very short discussion turned a number of people around when you start talking about how many tons of trash was picked up.
Mobile litter control. That would probably go in Ward 5.
I think that'd do it.
I got your answer. The vehicular improvement cleaner.
Ooh.
Vehicular improvement cleaner.
Okay.
All right, keep going, sorry.
Okay, we probably need to get down here.
So the next, the next steps then are to incorporate any of those adopted policies or if we choose to go the manual route into our stormwater funding program. And then all of these new policies, as we'll bring them together, they'll come together as part of a single document, that stormwater policy manual that can be adopted by council prior to finalizing the stormwater program funding. So it's, it, funding program, it'll be there. And when we get questions, we can say, yes, we have those answers, we have those things worked out. And so the next step then potentially is a study session in August or September. If, if you choose to look at individual policies or we can do something where I'm gonna need a little bit more time than August or September to get everything together in the policy manual, but that's where the next step would be.
Of course, the key is to have all this packaged up when you are ready to go. And that's why we're here tonight in 14th of July, but we, we just want to keep plugging and make sure we're going the direction you want us to go.
That's great. I'm glad you're making so much. And you said you already have a lot of things in place, it's just not consolidated in anyone.
It's consolidating them, updating them, reviewing them, revising them, improving them where necessary. And that's the process we're going through right now.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, councilmember Hickman?
Are, are we gonna have to have any policies or do anything relative to if the bond pack part of this piece on the, on the capital side? I don't, I know we haven't really been focusing or thinking about that, I'm just wondering and I, and I'm curious if what, if any feedback from the meetings we've had so far, has there been? The bond piece relative to the utility piece and relative to them being voted on at the same time. The one meeting that I went to, I had several people comment to me how much more expensive this is because they're adding the two numbers together. And I don't know if that's something we're hearing from people or not, but I, I heard that from several people the night I was there. So.
Okay.
Do we have any policies on the, on the bond piece and what kind of feedback? I guess it's two questions.
Okay, we'll kick that, that's a great question, we'll, we'll continue to kick it around. My mind goes to more kind of design criteria, how are we designing this project, what's the standard and so on. And council just recently approved the contract with Meachak Associates to drill down into all of our engineering design criteria for stormwater. So that's happening already and will, and that's, we're trying to bring that back simultaneously. And we get those questions, you know, how, how would you design this pipe or this detention base or whatever it is? And we've got really good standards, but we want to bring them up to date, they're 1996 vintage standards right now. Beyond that, I, I just need to think about that, that's a good question, but.
Beyond, I mean, my overall impression from, I, I've been to all of them and my overall impression has been people have been more positive about the bond part than I actually thought they were, would. People like the fact, I mean, it's, it's kind of like the transportation bond issue. People really like the fact that they know exactly what it's going to do and they know that there's gonna be something in every ward. Of course, Ward 5, several Ward 5 people have said, oh, they're not really, there's none far out and we only, you know, we should have more. So we, we did hear that, but then we also had a good discussion about, you know, some other things. But the overall, my impression has been they've been pretty positive and you've been at the stations, so you've heard people is.
Yeah, I haven't, I don't have, and I, I haven't read through all the cards, Carrie kind of updates us on those after every open house. But for the personal conversations I've had and the group conversations that I've been at, I don't remember one negative comment about the bond.
And this comment wasn't negative about the bond, it was supportive of the bond.
Now, we have heard that a little bit. Now, okay, now you put the two together, this is twice as much as I was gonna pay last time.
That's why I'm concerned about them being on the ballot at the same time and we brought that up.
So we have heard that, but, but not a lot, not a lot of that. Oh, I really like the bond because this is gonna fix some big issues, this is gonna help with flooding, this is gonna. And now, I will tell you, most of our conversations have been with residential homeowners, okay? We are going to have one that targets more of the business, non-residential community, which will still be open to the public, but the conversation may be more targeted in that direction because we need to hear from that population as well.
Absolutely.
So these are mainly residential home, we've had, don't get me wrong, we've had business owners, but the conversations mainly are focused around the residential, you know, what you're gonna be paying on your home monthly bill. So we still have more audiences to hear from, but I've not heard, I mean, my feeling is people love the bond. I mean, I'll tell you that right now. I mean, I don't know if Sean and Carrie feel the same way, they like, they really like it.
And it was so heavily vetted in the stormwater master plan, it's, it's, it's really thorough. But yeah, this question of the combination of the rates has been discussed.
They also like the equitable side of the bond, right? You're paying based on your property value and nobody in this room has any say over what your property value is. I mean, that is assessed by somebody else.
Yeah, I just, I'll just put that out there for, you know, y'all to chew on, have our follow-up meetings that, I mean, I guess my two comments would be, I think it's worth exploring as we move forward in these discussions whether or not we want to have those on the ballot at the same time. Because I, I increasingly think it's gonna be, we're gonna have to explain that narrative to people as opposed to just one or the other. You know, if it's just a utility, for example, you know, a lot of us could maybe say that it's cheaper than the first one that you voted against, but people are gonna add the two numbers together and they're gonna say, why is it so much more expensive? Then we're gonna be explaining, which is always the challenge when you're trying to get something passed from my perspective versus splitting the two, whichever one goes first. You know, we could debate if the, if the bonds being properly supported, it sounds like, that maybe it goes first. I have heard some feedback that people are concerned that the bonds may be too big and hurts. And I'm concerned about that, you know, it's important for my ward because we have a lot of work to get done in Ward 4, but at the same time, we need to start getting the money to start doing some of these projects. And so when you have those conversations with the business folks, I think that that's something worth exploring as well as with, you know, our property owners and whoever else comes to these town halls, you know, on the, on the, you know, on the, you know, on the bond side as well.
Okay, councilmember Wilson and then Holman.
I have had pushback for the, the combination of the bond and the utility and that they've, my ward immediately put that all together and was upset about it in, on the Facebook groups. Now, the, the face-to-face meetings have been a little bit more easier, broadly. The, 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 the big one for me on that is that there isn't, there are not a lot of projects east of 48th Street. There's a very large area east of 48th Street. I did do some kind of research, it's like 3,900 homes east of 48th Street. I know that there's probably not a legal tool for excluding east of 48th Street from the bond vote, it's a citywide vote. But I have asked Mr. Lewis to kind of explore on the utility fee side, the stormwater, the 625 part, if we could find a way to exempt A1 and A2 properties. Because that would get a lot of the folks, I think it has a couple of components. It would, if we could exclude them from the fee part, that, that argument that I'm not getting anything for it, there's not gonna be any stormwater maintenance happening out there is, is an interesting argument. That would take that away and then I would ask that we replace that with, if you're agricultural A1, A2 and you have a livestock impact, that there be some sort of a livestock impact fee at a certain threshold, like you have 100 head of cattle, then you need to pay a water impact fee. That would get you to a place that we take them out of that maintenance, monthly maintenance fee, but when there is actually something that they're doing that's causing a bigger problem in the overall city. And, and Steve told me that this is interesting and creative and weird and probably not legal, so, you know, it may not be, but I would like to explore. No, no, it's probably not legal, yeah, but that's my, my assumption is that there's probably something in there that's not going to work in the way that the infrastructure is on these kinds of issues. But I would like to see that explored as a, because I think, and also on the west side, now I don't know on the west side how infrastructure, I don't know what the infrastructure looks like, but I know when you get out east of 48th Street.
Flats have a lot of A1, A2s.
Right, so that may, may, may just not be work, it may not work.
I mean, I'm for, if, if we went down that route, I'd say fine. If you don't participate in the fee, then you get no benefit.
Well, absolutely, I think that they're fine with it, honestly.
We're not gonna clean your street.
You wouldn't clean the street. You should go tell them that, because they, they laugh and laugh and laugh about the clean.
It's gonna be a little thing that you, it's gonna cost us more, we know it costs us more with the fees because we do services. We'd probably save money if we didn't provide service to them.
The problem is though, we do have to spend money east of 48th. We, and we could be spending more and more money east of 48th. We have all those bridges over all those culverts, we have Day Blue Creek, we have Clear Creek, we have Jim Blue Creek, we have all of them and they have to be maintained. And, and so I, and I heard that argument, one of the biggest problems we've had was that huge Reynolds Dam out there and it destroyed the whole road. How much did that cost to fix? I mean, so there, we really do do a lot of things east of 48th. And, and I, I'd love to do that because it would make it easier with Ward 5, but I don't know that I could truly make the argument that we don't do prevention and maintenance east of 48.
Well, I have pictures of, you know, people having to reconstruct their own culverts on Ward 5 right now and.
I'm not talking about their driveways, I'm talking about.
This is because of, of the road construction, that we have a lot of incidents, and I don't want to get down in the weeds on that, but a lot of incidents where what we've done, the CG, CDBG road construction projects have created problems on rural properties because of the amount of water now that's coming off of them and how it's being handled. So, I mean, the, I, it was just a suggestion, you know, like, I, I'm trying to find a way that I can help support the city in this, and, and that it's, it's going to be, you know, equitable. And I would say that while, yes, we do road projects out there, we are not going to do the kinds of projects that happen in core Norman out there. I even, my suggestion, I don't want to poo-poo the work of the committee, because I know you guys went there a lot, but my suggestion was to tier it in a different way, where you do circles of, the older part of Norman has this bigger set of problems. They should have a higher tier. And the newer part of Norman has a, a lower tier, because they have the, they have all the.
Perfect world you have by watershed.
Yeah. I, I have led us, because we're so interested in talking about this, we have gotten way off the agenda. So, and I'm, I've really appreciated the conversation. And I, too, care about Ward 5, and I know, I know what kind of a challenge it is. I, I really do understand that. Stephen, you had, I'm sorry, Councilmember Holman, you had a question?
I agree with the concern about, you know, putting them on at the same time, but I also have a concern that if they're not on at the same time, people might think, well, I just voted for stormwater a few months ago, or last year, and now I have to vote again. I thought I already did that. So, I'd have that concern, too, just to look at the other side of that.
The committee felt strongly that they go on together, but ultimately, all of this is your decision, you know, everything that you guys are discussing. But for that reason, you know, what you want the final thing to look like, the committee felt strongly they go on together.
Well, I would definitely have concern about approving a bond to go and do all these projects and fix all these problems, but then have no way to maintain it at all.
Or you don't have the staff to oversee those projects being done.
Either.
It creates.
And, I mean, I think the Ward 5 issue is a real tough one. I mean, when you look at a map of the sources of pollution into Lake Thunderbird, there's a real bright red spot out in Ward 5, right north of the lake. It's somebody's farmland, I don't know what's going on out there, but there is a huge bright red spot last time I saw that map out there. I mean, agricultural land definitely pollutes, and I think maybe a solution, like if you have X amount of livestock or things like that going on, that could be a path forward.
We just developed what farther out there.
See, see, this is, man.
Okay, let's, let's get back to the, and I think we're, you're done. All right. Any other questions about the policies? You guys have done good work. We appreciate it. It'll be interesting to hear the next round in September. So, if there's no other comments, I will adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Carrie.
Citywide contest to rename the street sweepers and.